The AGE and the Budget and Finance Committee, so we'll get started. The Budget and Finance Committee is joining the Audit and Government Efficiency Committee today to hear the Commission on Revenue Efficiency for CORE presentation of their blueprint for reform of city collections. And going forward, it's going to take the joint efforts and the political will of both of these committees to see that the recommendations in the report are implemented with a sense of urgency. And I first want to thank City Controller Wendy Grul for the letter that she provided to the committee, which you all have. Reading through the blueprint has only reinforced my views that the recommendations can save our city many millions of dollars, many tens of millions of dollars. And as Chair of AGE, I personally will treat this blueprint as our committee's number-one priority. We'll have a full discussion, but we'll also need to demand action and set benchmarks so there won't be any more needless delay. We need to show this crucial challenge, the urgency that it's always deserved, and it's probably deserved for the last 20 years where some of these items have been discussed, but never implemented. It's also becoming increasingly more important and necessary for the council and mayor to adopt a no-tolerance policy towards bureaucratic resistance and departmental indifference regarding collections. We've seen what this type of internal opposition to change can do, not only to our city's finances, the morale of our employees, but also to the most trusted and valuable of our assets, the trust of our residents. All of the blueprint's recommendations are necessary to pull the city out of its economic slump. However, I think the most important one is to create an Inspector General for revenues and collections, and I strongly support that recommendation. A new and independent Inspector General will help us evaluate the ongoing practices of departments and the management capabilities or lack of capabilities of those in charge. Inspector General can give us a knowledgeable, objective, no-nonsense report indicating who in the city is succeeding and who is failing when it comes to embracing the blueprint and making it work. And I think this position can be the difference between 20 years of some of these ideas being offered piecemeal and never being followed up on, and someone whose only real job it is is to make it actually happen. I think without this position, we'll get some of these things implemented anyway because it's so desperate a need that I don't think they'll fall off the map the way they have at other times. But I think to actually implement all of them, which we really need to do, I don't think we can do it without this position. I'd like to thank Bernard Parks, Chair of the Budget Committee, for all that he's done to get us to this point, and ask if he'd like to make a statement as well. And then I'd like to call Ron Galperin up to the table to represent his committee to give us a summary of what's included in the CORE report, particularly with an emphasis on the role of the Inspector General.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to also comment that Greg Smith, in being a part of the Budget and Finance, has been a vital part of pushing many of these things forward as we incrementally have addressed many of these issues, but there's a lot more to be done. I think the issues that have been outlined in the commission's report are very valuable, and I think that we certainly need to move forward on them. The one that I believe that, in my judgment, is probably the most important is getting -- culling out the IG position and getting it moving so that it becomes effective, hopefully before the end of this year. There's other issues in this report that can be responded to in the normal course of business, and it appears a lot of them would be waiting for the account receivable system to go in place so that it begins to do its job. I think all of our tasks are going to be primarily, once we move forward, there's going to be some tough decisions to be made. Some of them will go against the core of some mindsets in the council, and that we may have to talk about things that were sacred at one time, where sevionization, as opposed to sworn officers doing certain jobs, we may have to think about outsourcing, where that's been a major issue. We saw the debate on paramedics, even though there was multimillion dollars that was obviously in savings. There was certainly a great deal of discussion of whether city employees should do that job with an increased amount of money. And so I think those are going to be the tough issues as we move forward. We've had some starts and stops on these issues for the five or six years I've been here, but we've eked out some of these incremental achievements. And I think there's clearly going to be a need for the will of getting this done. Certainly, from the mayor's office, an executive order five is the mainstay of ensuring general managers do their job, but also the technology that doesn't make each bill or each one of these activities a mountain of paperwork, that we need to find out how our technology can catch up with the real world. And I think, as we've talked about in this committee a great deal, the expansion of the number of outside vendors that do collections, that that is going to be a major issue so that how quickly we can get those bills or debts to them, and how quickly they can bring them some conclusion, and then the final result, do we end up with the ability to sell them in bulk, or how we get rid of them overall. I think one of the things that this report does, just as we work through it, particularly with the fire department, that we've been beating ourselves to death for years about how much debt is out there, and we find out a large portion of it is uncollectible. And I think it's great that we've finally come to grips with those issues on paramedic billing. And then I think also on, although we've talked a great deal about the LED DOT shortfalls, we realize that most of that will not get resolved until the new RFPs are done so that we can correct or change the current vendor's operational procedures. So there's a lot of work to be done, and I think certainly it's not foreign to many of us that have been plugging along on these items little by little, but it certainly gives us, between this report and the Macias report, a game plan that will keep all of us busy, probably, hopefully not all of our careers, but a good portion of the next couple of years.
And now, Mr. Galperin, if you'd like to present your report. If other committee members want to come up, that would be great, too.
Good afternoon, committee chairs and committee members. I'm joined here, I'm Ron Galperin, Chair of the Commission on Revenue Efficiency, and I'm joined by my fellow commissioners, David Farrar, as well as Michael Gagin. And thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. What I thought I would do, if that works for the committee, is to just provide a brief overview for about three minutes of the blueprint, sort of the bullet points, and then go to some questions and some dialogue about all this. Just as a summary of what got us here, as I think everybody knows, this commission was created about six months ago, seven members, and during that six-month period, we've had actually about 25 meetings, in which we've sought to, as thoroughly as we could, look at various opportunities to improve collections. And I'll also talk in a moment about what our next phases of work may be. The numbers are familiar to just about everybody, certainly to the council members, in terms of $541 million or so in non-tax receivables, of which about 77% are 120 days past due or beyond, and about 43%, roughly, which is two years past due or more, mostly uncollectible, as Councilmember Parks so correctly said. Only about less than half of those accounts which are eligible for referral to a collection agency are being referred. And less than half of the city departments are applying interest or penalties to past due accounts, and we've been talking about this for years and years and years. As a matter of fact, this was one of the seven items that was laid out in Executive Directive Number Five from 2005, and here we are approaching the end of 2010, and it still has not happened. We've been talking a lot about centralized billing. As a matter of fact, I saw a report dating 20 years ago from Ernst &amp; Young on the subject, and they made the suggestion centralized, and here we are talking about it again. But what we've sought to do in our report is really go in depth in terms of talking about what is the meaning of centralization, because there's centralization of billing, there's centralization of the data, there is centralization of authority, there are many aspects to all this, and also how do you balance that centralization with giving departments skin in the game? So, one last thing to say before kind of going into our recommendations, which is, in our next phases, we're also going to be looking at some of the uncollected taxes, which is another very large sum, and what we can do to kind of improve that. In terms of our recommendations, and Councilmember Coretts and Audit and Governmental Efficiency Chair so correctly pointed out the recommendation relating to an Inspector General. There are a lot of different city officials and a lot of jobs within the city that have to do, in one way or another, with collections, but there isn't one singular one that deals just with how do we improve revenue and collections. And that's why this is such a central part of the recommendations of CORE. It's about being able to independently report on how departments are doing. It's about also trying to bring together various parties that, quite frankly, don't always cooperate so well for the best interest of collections in the city, and serving really as a conduit to improve oversight and to improve the collaborations that are absolutely necessary. I mentioned centralization and really creating clear authority. Some of that centralization is going to happen through the FMS system, which is supposed to come online next year. Having said that, however, it's my understanding that that comes online sometime in June, but the reporting of numbers doesn't happen perhaps until later in the year, and then it's only summary reporting, and it does not include a lot of different departments. So it's going to be a long process, but we have to do everything we can, I believe, to make that happen more quickly. It's about holding department managers accountable. As I mentioned, it's absolutely shocking that you can have an executive directive where half of the items in that executive directive go unheeded. But again, it's not just about, I think, holding the department manager's feet to the fire, but creating a system of incentives as well. We want to see enhancement of the quality and availability of information that is out there. We believe, and we go into this in our report, that the numbers that you see are inaccurate in a whole variety of different ways. Number one, Office of Finance hasn't really had the resources to audit the numbers that are provided by the departments. Also, for example, in the case of the fire department billings, there's a large sum that is reported that, quite frankly, is legally uncollectible, and yet it's showing as money that is uncollectible. In the case of DOT, for example, there are sums that are showing as due to us, that even if we were to collect, we would have to give a significant portion thereof to other parties. So the numbers have to be, I think, completely revised so that they are, in fact, accurate, and we know what we're talking about. Collection agencies, that's a very important part of this, including secondary collection agencies and moving that process along. A system of amnesty and of settlements, this has been done successfully in the context of tax receivables, and we believe it can be done with the non-tax receivables, sooner the better. Selling our aging receivables, rather than just waiting five years to pass and then writing them off, let's sell them, even if it's for a penny, a fraction of a penny on the dollar, that's better than nothing. We've got a number of very specific recommendations also relating to fire department, to DOT, and to the housing department. Let me really say thank you to a whole bunch of parties here. First of all, to my fellow commissioners, the ones who are here, as well as the ones who aren't here. We have an amazing vice chair, Cindy Miskowski. We have just a very, very hard-working group of people who have given of their time and continue to do so, including also Cheryl Parisi and Brandon Shamim and Mark Ames, who's not here. Wanted very much to thank those councilmembers who had such a vital role in seeing us created, including our council president, who brought the original motion for the creation of CORE, very much the two chairs that are here, Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Coretts for really taking a leadership role in this, and the mayor's office, which has been very helpful, as well as the controller Wendy Grul. And with that, let's open it up, and then we can also, to a later point, talk about what next steps would be for CORE. Thank you.
Okay, and I thank you. And I know Councilmember Smith actually has to leave in a few minutes, so I'll extend him the courtesy of asking a couple of questions up front.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate it, and I apologize, I am a commissioner on a commission that's actually meeting right next door, and I represent the city on that commission, and our meeting's been planned for months, so I can't wiggle out of that one. Just a couple of things I'd like to see us do as you go forward today, and I want to thank, first of all, the commission for what you did here, really focus on a lot of things. You mentioned some of these items, and I think we need to really have a real matrix and a look at all these different things that have been proposed before, the prior council actions and motions, the control audits that are out there from the past that have not been followed, the elements of that, the Macias report, and then your recommendations, and kind of take a look at all the recommendations that are out there, not just your report, which is really substantial and really good, but I think we need to take a really good look at everything in the whole spectrum. And you did some good jobs at looking at best practices, I think that needs to be done on the whole spectrum. And then, secondly, I want to see a little more from the city attorney. I've had some discussions with the city attorney, and he makes a very strong argument, although as a member of the Budget Committee, I've been resistant to increasing anything in anyone's department right now, but he makes a very good argument, and you've addressed some of it here under Section 3(c), role of the city attorney, but that the city attorney can play a significant role in getting collections increased. As he says, when you send a letter from the Office of Finance saying you owe the city some money, people can throw it in the trash can. If you send a letter from the city attorney saying you owe us some money, and by the way, we're going to take the following actions against you if you don't, we'll probably see a substantial increase. So we need to see where he is in that. He has told me he's working on a plan on how he can fit into this system, and I think we really have to take a good look at that, too, particularly from the budget point of view. If he can make it self-sufficient and show us that he's going to increase collections substantially, then it might be self-funding, and it's in everyone's best interest to do that. So I appreciate your letting me have a few words here. I wish I could be here for the whole discussion, I just, I think it's a great discussion, and we need to act for a change. As you said, it's time to act. But I think we need to have a much broader spectrum of the co-global discussion, and you've probably done a lot of that, and maybe you can present those things for us in a matrix form so we can look at all those other recommendations and see a really clean lineage of, you know, what's been done already. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words, and I do have to go next door, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
If you need to rush back for a boat or something, I'll see if I can wheel out of that one for a minute, but I'm in 10:70.
And you make a fair point that we need to act, but I think on some of these, the council has acted, we've passed motions, and I shouldn't even say weeks, long before I was here, just things I've observed over the years. And we do our part, but it doesn't translate, so we have to figure out a way to translate all these ideas. There's so many good ideas in this, in the Macias report, and you look at one and say, oh my God, I could save $10 million if I could make sure this piece happened.
Is that the same $10 million we've been talking about? $10 million?
And we've probably got 50 ideas like that, but if we implemented everything, it adds up to enough to solve a lot of problems in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you guys.
Thank you.
And I've got a few other questions. Probably the most obvious and immediate one is, what do you view as the highest priority in terms of time? What should we be doing in the next 30 days to implement, to really get this rolling? And what can we translate into revenue the most easily and immediately?
Great question. Let me first also just, if I may, address what Councilmember Smith was asking about in terms of a matrix of the various recommendations. First of all, very correctly stated that there have been a whole slew of council files on this issue over the years, many of them overlapping. And actually, a couple of months ago, Councilmember Parks had requested that the CLA report back on a number of the collection-related council files, that we've included that as our Appendix One, and then also attached to that another 20 that are related to collections. So this, I believe, is an opportunity to kind of bring many of those together, as opposed to just a whole series of new council files that might result. What we also sought to do is to look at the recommendations that had been made by the controller that had, in fact, not been implemented. And this was laid out in the follow-up audit of the controller to collections from the 2007 audit, and then in the spring of this year was the follow-up.
I was going to say, I assume you're referring to multiple controllers over the years.
Yes, yes. And that's in Appendix A. And what we sought to do was lay out those which had been not implemented or partially implemented of the 35 original recommendations from three and a half years ago. We outline each of those and also note which are complementary or corresponding recommendations of CORE, or rather, recommendations of CORE that would be hopefully useful in actually carrying out those recommendations that were not or were only partially implemented. In terms of the city attorney, one of the things that we recommend is, and I know the city attorney's office is working on this, is how liens can be used more and more effectively to achieve enforcement, as well as a recommendation relating to possible funding mechanism for the resources that the city attorney might be able to use to actually help us collect more money. In terms of what to do today to bring in money, there are a couple of things, and certainly would like to open this up also to my fellow commissioners. We would like to see, as soon as possible, an RFP put out, or an RFQ for the sale of the very, very delinquent receivables that we have. You're looking, as we talked about, about 43% of the $540 million that is more than two years old. We believe a large portion of that can be put into a pool, or to a series of pools or tranches within a pool that can be sold or auctioned off. And to put out an RFP or an RFQ for that, post haste, we think, would be very helpful. There's also, and we lay this out in the report, amnesty and settlements. Even if you collect 40% of something, that's better than collecting 100% of nothing. And there have been successful such programs in the past. I know that Finance, and I'm sure Finance can speak more specifically to this, has suggested the basics for such a plan. We'd like to see that happen, and we believe the sooner the better. Also, and there have been a number of reports about how the dollars from EMS can be increased with a new system, the council actually approved two contracts to that end. The sooner that those get implemented, the better, because the current system that we have is not one that has done what we need to really maximize what we bring in. There's going to be a great opportunity in terms of DOT going for a new RFP when it comes to parking citations. That's not, that RFP goes out sometime, I'm told, within the next 30 days. That will not necessarily, will not generate more money tomorrow, but it's something that is coming up within the next 30-day period. They're also, the council also approved of secondary collection companies to take a second go at a whole variety of different accounts. That's been approved, but it actually has not yet been implemented, and I understand there are some issues that are being addressed, and I'm sure Finance can address those more specifically. And of course, moving on the subject of the Inspector General. And lastly, on the issue of late fees and penalties, we believe this could be done very, very quickly. And it could be done at the same time as also having an amnesty and settlement program. And even for those things to which we have not applied, those late fees and penalties, it might provide an incentive for people to settle with us and for people to settle up with us. Fellow commissioners, any further thoughts on that?
A couple of thoughts. First of all, I just would like to thank Councilmember Coretts for appointing me to this, as his appointee to this commission, I greatly appreciate it. I know I have been badgering you since you were an Assemblyman.
Yeah, I was going to point that out.
Care more about this.
That you're the first person that raised this issue to me at the state level when I was in the legislature.
So I think--
Clearly, uncollected monies are all over the place, both--
They're everywhere. They're everywhere. And you and I, I was actually at a committee up in Sacramento when you were on it, and we talked about that. But the reality is, I think, finally, you just said, if you think this is so important, we're going to have a commission, and you can prove that you're right and wrong, one of the ways. So I'm glad to be here doing that, and thank you so much. Also, I had, when, I think when Councilman Parks was first appointed to the Budget Committee, I met with him early about huge write-offs on the EMS, and I'd like to say, I think that if you want to, you asked the question about what are the things we need to do first. If I could address myself just briefly to that specific question, and I think Ron indicated a lot of things that haven't been done right, that need to be done right, and all of those add up to a lot of revenue. But the two largest pools of potential revenue, if you look at the, all of the list of accounts receivable over the last, oh, 10 years at least, probably good 80% of that is either with the fire department or with the Department of Transportation. Now, I feel very comfortable that the council action recently with respect to the fire department accounts receivables is going to result in probably as much as $50 million more a year, and I think that's half of what we had seen as the two elephants that need to be done something with. And I want to second Ron's mention of the Department of Transportation, because the other huge volume of accounts receivables is simply parking tickets, which are not paid. And we think that if the council were to focus specifically on not only how the contracts are awarded, but what the contracts say, there's a potential for, on a going-forward basis, a lot of additional revenue to be acquired. I think that's just an answer to your question. I've got a couple of other ideas, but I think I'll pass to Michael for a comment at this point.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are 65 recommendations in the report, and Ron and David have touched on subjects covered by the major recommendations. But this morning, for the heck of it, I quantified these recommendations into different categories. And it turns out that 27 of the recommendations relate directly to the Department of Finance. 10 relate to the Department of Transportation. So 57% of our recommendations relate to these two departments. 39 of the 65 recommendations can be implemented by council instruction. Nine can be implemented by instruction from both the council and the mayor. Four can be implemented by instruction from the mayor. So 80% of these recommendations do not require statutory action or the adoption of an ordinance or changes to the budget. So in terms of thinking about organizing a response to Core's recommendations, you might want to consider this numerical context. And of course, the majority of the recommendations, while, you know, they don't rise to the level of EMS or the DOT collection for parking citations, but cumulatively, even though individually they might be small, cumulatively, I think, they're very important to make the collection system of the city more rational, more efficient, and to make the billing system of the city more rational and efficient. So I would urge the council not to overlook the little things in our recommendations while giving a proper priority to the big things.
If we put together a timeline for the next couple of years with benchmarks, who do you think would be in the best position to actually create that timeline?
Well, what we have done, if you, the appendices to our blueprint do a couple of things. And I'll refer you to Appendix 15, which is what we're calling the Core Blueprint Recommendations' Sample Tracker. And each and every one of the recommendations was laid out, including the applicable city department or office or entity that might be responsible for seeing those carried out. Some which can be done per instruction of the mayor, some per instruction of the council, some by mayor and/or council. And then it also lays out a status, January 1st of 2011, where are we, April 1st of 2011, and so on. This is just a recommendation of one possible way to do that. But in going through this, one can look and see what can be done quickly and what takes longer. Certainly, changing over our data systems is going to be something that takes much longer. But we believe that most of these changes could actually be done within a 60-day period, perhaps 90 days for others. And some are going to take much longer, of course, but many of them can be done rather quickly.
Who do you think would be the best to put together to help us drive that timeline? Is it the Commission?
Please.
One of the strengths of our commission is that Ron and I rarely agree on everything. So this is one of those times. I think all of those things are important, but if I had to say, in answer to your question of who, I think the first thing I would say, the real issue is a what. And the what is, what can council do next to make sure that this blueprint actually makes a difference to the city? And what council can do next is to, and if it's the only thing you have on your piece of paper to do for the next two months, is to find an inspector general and get that process started. And once you have done that, the answer to your question of who could be responsible for tracking the timeline, for checking the process of the Ts, for dotting the Is, that question will be answered. Now, I was one of the people that originally did not think the idea of an inspector general was at all a good idea. I think Michael joined with that. We had a lot of serious questions about whether that was a good idea. And we thought the charter provides that other people, the mayor, different department heads have certain responsibilities. If they would simply do what they were supposed to do under Executive Order 5, why do we need a new person to do that? And then we had a presentation by the Board of Police Commissioners, and I just happened to see here Mr. Richard Taffey, who made a presentation about how they work with the police garages. And he actually, his presentation was one of the best. I don't think we were just stoned. I think they actually are doing a pretty good job of collecting revenue. But he said something, when people at our commission asked him, what do you say explains that you've turned it around and now things are working and they weren't working before? And he said, "You can expect what you inspect." And that's a catchy saying, but when he started talking about being inspected, I remembered my six years in the Navy, and whenever there was going to be an inspection, my uniform was better, my shoes were shiny, and everything else was the way it should be, but might not have been but for that inspection. And so I just would like to, having been initially opposed to it, I just want to throw overwhelming support for, I think, the most significant thing that the council can do in reaction to this report, is to expedite the choice, appointing, and the delegation of authority to an inspector general, to make sure that Ron's matrix, that there's actually somebody that can use the matrix and determine whether departments have, in fact, implemented the recommendations. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would certainly tend to agree with you, especially, I think, any other position, you're sort of part of the whole operation, you're too permanently embedded. I think it has to be a position where that person can step on people's toes and know they're not trying to get along. In fact, they're trying to get their job done and leave because they have a relatively short, finite period of time, a couple of years or so. So I think you make a good point. Following up on that, what exactly do you all think the roles and responsibilities of the inspector general would be? And how different would that be from positions in the Controller's office or the Department of Finance?
Well, the Controller certainly does audits and very fine audits. But we had an audit, which was three and a half years ago, then there was a follow-up audit three years later. And I think that the point of you can expect what you inspect is really true, because audits are something that are looking back as opposed to on an ongoing basis, and really monitoring where we are, not just with the numbers, but with compliance. So that's one thing, in terms of how it relates to the role of the Controller. The second is that, when you look at the role of Finance, Finance has increasingly been put in a position to report on compliance or non-compliance of various departments with not just the Executive Directive Number 5, but with the guidelines that are set out for city collection. We believe this has not necessarily been the best recipe, because there has to be also a cooperative relationship between Finance and between all these various departments. And it's, I think, and perhaps Finance can talk to this more specifically, but it puts them, at least we believe, in a difficult situation when they're the ones who have to be the ones to point fingers and say, "You haven't done a good job," to another department. Now, also, we have talked about the fact that there are a lot of roles out there in which collections and revenue are a component. But it's vital, especially when you look at the numbers, and when you look at the seriousness of the problem and the fact that this has been a problem for a long time, that there be a concentrated effort just on this. And I also believe that it should not just be about, as it were, beating up on departments and saying, "Are you complying? Are you not complying?" Although, that's very important. The question is, how can they be engaged in a constructive process? Look at, for example, the issue of late fees and penalties, where 50% are not in compliance. Now, we can continue to point our finger and say, "Why haven't you complied?" And there's a valid reason to do that. However, that has not been a successful recipe for getting it done. Rather, what we've recommended is that there be an omnibus ordinance that is proposed that would apply to all of these departments and all of these various types of receivables, unless otherwise forbidden by statute or there's some other reason why it can't be done. Put it out there to the departments to comment, to speak now, forever hold their peace, and then get it done, and get it done all at once, and short-circuit that whole process. So it's about enforcement and compliance, but it's also about, I think, much more than that, and trying to, in some ways, change the culture to encourage departments to think about how they can be creative and proactive about generating revenue.
Now, how, I know in your report you talked about incentivizing departments. How would you implement that? I mean, I've had that thought, too. You have departments that, you know, have ideas for increased revenue. They don't necessarily have the positions to do it, but if they had those positions, they'd be able to pay for them with the increased revenue, except we don't necessarily put the revenue back in those departments. How do we make that connection? How do we incentivize departments so that managers will be more motivated to assist us?
I personally believe that there's a balancing act involved, because you want to give the departments skin in the game, but also you have to look after the welfare of the general fund. And if you look at, for example, some of the paradigms in the County of LA, and in terms of how budgeting is done there, the, a lot of the operation costs for various departments are part of the monies that they generate. And if they do a great job, they can benefit. If they don't, then there, then there can be some serious consequences. Now, having said that, that does not mean that all of the revenue that is generated by departments ought to stay with those departments, because as Councilmember Parks is so well-stated, we have to look after that general fund and make sure that there is money for those general fund purposes. But through, we believe, starting with some kind of pilot program or programs where a certain kind of benefit can be had by departments that generate some additional revenues through some out-of-the-box thinking, through some new approaches, that that would be a great start in this process. That's number one. And number two is, looking at what are the positions in the city and department by department that really generate revenue. And those are the last ones that we want to be getting rid of. Those are the last ones that we want to be furloughing, because if they're bringing in money, then we want to be able to let them do their job to, in fact, bring that money in.
Yeah, and we've made that mistake in some places. You know, transportation, for instance, we have, I think, 70 people short that write the tickets for the city, that pay many multiple times their salary in tickets. And, you know, we're not doing it just for the revenue. It's a real shortfall of staff positions. But obviously, if we filled those and we were focused on filling positions like that, we would generate considerable more revenue.
And you look at the Office of Finance, for example, which has had to, because of the current finances of the city, they've been closed every other Friday. And that means a full day that people are not there every other week to be focusing on bringing money in. That's very difficult to operate an office when that's the case.
Let me ask you one other question. I have more, but I'll ask Mr. Parks, give him a shot at it, too. I notice there's a lot of focus on the collections piece of this, I mean, the collection agency piece of this, making sure that when we hit the appropriate point, we turn things over to a collection agency, which we do about half as much as we should, making sure that when the collection agency has outlived its time with that particular receivable, that we get it to a secondary collection agency. And when the item just looks dead to us, we sell the receivables. The piece I don't think we covered much is, are there things we could be doing in-house in a better manner before we hit that point where it gets to the collection agency? Did you look much at that, and is there more to be studied in that piece? Because obviously, the best opportunity is anything we can collect before it actually has to get there. But once we've acknowledged we've done what we can and it's not happening, then we have to get it to a collection agency timely. We've got to get it to a secondary collection agency timely. We've got to systematize all the steps and do it in every department, in every case, and just make this a simple process. But what could we do, or have you given enough focus to it yet, to answer the question? What more could we do before we hit the point where it goes to a collection agency?
That's also a great question. First, I'll refer you to our Appendix 5, in which what we've sought to do is revise the current accounts receivable process flow and timetable. In the current guidelines that the city has, the collection guidelines, there is a chart that lays out that whole process time flow, and we've sought to revise it. This is our recommendation for how it can be revised. And it lays out, for example, the department sending out the initial billing within five days of service, and then performing in-house collection activities for a 45-day period. Part of why we believe that an inspector general can be so helpful is to really make sure that that is happening, because the longer that you wait to send out those initial bills, the more that time is ticking, the less you're going to collect, the later it's going to go to a collection agency. So there's a lot that can be done within that 45-day period in-house.
Do we have more specifics, or have you thought through any more specifics on what those things would be in those 45 days? What should be systematized, what should be done by every single department every time?
Well, the current collection guidelines actually do lay out what is supposed to be done during that 45-day period. We believe that what's in that, those guidelines right now during those first 45-day period are pretty good. The problem is actually enforcing it and getting it done, department by department. As Commissioner Farrar pointed out, the two largest sources of receivables are Fire Department and DOT. Now, DOT has an outside vendor that handles that whole process from beginning to end. And that's also, in many ways, going to be happening with the new Fire Department contracts. So what we're talking about in terms of this chart, that is the Appendix Number 5, are different than those two particular ones, which are very, very large unto themselves. Mr. Farrar?
I have a very specific, almost a minutia anecdotal example of how people need to change the way they think for the jobs they do, and that's with all of us, but specifically addressing myself to the question of our own people, what can they do? And I think everybody at every level needs to understand that this is a perishable commodity. It's like tomatoes that are going to go bad. It becomes less valuable for every day, for every month, every year that goes by. Now, having said that, that's just an idle statement without thinking how that affects each individual department or each individual collector's responsibility. If more time were focused on the stuff that's only a week old, as opposed to the stuff that's a month old, the productivity of each employee would be enhanced significantly. Now, I said this was an anecdotal example. When I first got involved in looking into what the City of Los Angeles was doing with respect-- respect to collections, a gentleman over here was a police chief, I was just out here doing some things, and the city attorney then was a guy named Jim Hahn, and the collections activity, the whole collections activity within the city was resident in the city attorney's office. And so I went in and started looking through things and found there were a really nice group of people trying to do a good job there, with no computers, with just everything in big paper bat boxes. And that's just the way life is. But the one thing that struck me is that somewhere up the chain, it had been decided that the most important cases to work on were those that were approaching the statute of limitations, because once they got to the statute, we wouldn't be able to sue them. And being in the collections business myself, I knew that that was as upside down as one could think. But that was not just an inadvertence that they were focusing on the oldest account, it was a policy directive. And I think what needs to happen is people need to, not just at a department head level or at a city attorney level, but need to internalize the thinking that the urgency rests with the newly delinquent account, and not with the account that's about to go into the statute of limitations, because it's probably not going to be collected, no matter how hard you try.
Well, we also have to make it easier for people to pay their bills. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I think I was looking for a recommendation, because I know we spent a lot of time discussing it, but, you know, sometimes it's not easy to pay a bill to the city of Los Angeles. We don't make it easy, just like we don't make it easy to apply for a business license. And, you know, we've explored, but I guess we haven't recommended yet anything pertaining to online payment for your debts. I mean, there are some jurisdictions, I understand, that have gone to a completely cash-free system of debt payment, where payment online, in fact, is not just encouraged, but you've got to pay online, or your alternative method of payment is a lot more difficult. So that, of course, can occur in that 45-day period as well.
Well, and I think that's something we've talked about off and on again, too. You know, my favorite example's animal services, where, you know, we had people going door-to-door. We didn't have a good method for allowing them to collect money, so they couldn't take a credit card and write up their licenses, which makes absolutely no sense, and it's difficult for people to pay for their license fees online. So all we would have to do is make those pretty simple changes, and many more people would be getting their animals licensed. And we probably wouldn't have needed to lay off our people doing that, in which case we'll drop to very few people with licenses, and lose a lot of revenue, and it's a vicious cycle, whereas just doing it in a little more efficient manner will make it all work. So I think it was a very good, very good point.
Mr. Chairman, that animal services is also my favorite example, and it's the reason that Mr. Galperin doesn't have a dog.
I do!
Oh, you do have a dog?
Yes, I do!
But...
Daisy will be very upset with you.
You know, we went to dog licensing when rabies were rampant, and the dog license was verification that you had your animal inoculated. I think Animal Services told us we haven't had a rabies outbreak in certainly more than a decade. But since the license is evidence of inoculation, then it seems to me there should be a way to make the certificate of inoculation that the veterinarian prepares, the ipso facto license, so that we don't have this elaborate way of keeping track of dogs and licensing them, keeping track of them, and then trying to somehow get licenses for the estimated $300,000, $300,000 animals in the city who are not licensed. A lot of efficiencies that can be effected, I think, in that department.
Just to follow up on that, and I'm sure that Animal Services could speak more specifically to this, there's actually some legislation that was just signed by the governor, which will hopefully actually make it much easier to do exactly what Commissioner Gagen has been talking about, and that we've been advocating for quite a while, because unfortunately, it has been very difficult to do online licensing. I know, because it actually took an inordinate amount of time to actually get a dog license for my dog. We've recommended, among other things, a centralized payment portal that will make it much easier to pay a variety of different kinds of bills to the city online. Again, from a technological point of view, we know that doesn't happen tomorrow morning, but that we can move in that direction with as many payment options as possible, having a customer ID number, so that, for example, information may be stored about a credit card, et cetera, so that when you go on to pay for something, for your second type of payment or your third type of payment to the city for, be it a license, or a permit, or a fee, or a fine, whatever it might be, that there is some consistency there, and finding ways to get others to collect for us. For example, there's a, and I had talked about this with Fire Department, there's a fee that went into effect for brush inspection, and it's a relatively small fee, as I recall, I believe it was $13. And I got a letter in the mail saying, I'm going to get a bill. And then I got a bill. And then, of course, there are those who will pay, and there are those who we have to go after collecting. What if we had just simply put that as part of the property tax bill that goes to property owners? It would have just been part of that. We could get the county to collect it for us, and then we wouldn't have actually been having to send out bills at all. Now, perhaps the Fire Department can talk more specifically about this. It was, it's my understanding that there was some concern that people might be kind of upset just having it added, although I know for myself, had it been just added to the property tax bill, I would have just paid it, and it would have been much easier than actually having to separately pay for the $13. So if we can look for all sorts of opportunities to get others to collect for us in some fashion, or do unified billings, that'll save us time and money and the costs of collections.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you for the report that you put forward. One of the things I was going to ask, if we could get our Office of Finance to come up to the table, because some of these questions...no, don't move. There's enough room for everybody. And then also, is anybody here from ITA? Let me just ask one, I'm going to just ask some highlights on some questions, and then before I get to the page-to-page stuff. But one of the things I was wondering about on, and I saw there was a little difference of opinion, as, or maybe it's not a difference of opinion, just the way the comment was, on the issue of selling debt. And that was discussed several times, and I think the Office of Finance said that it appears we would need a consultant to aid them in creating such a program. And I'm just wondering, what, from either side, what do you think goes into that issue of selling debt, and what is it in the sense that the city would have to construct to get to that point?
Who would you like to go first?
Whoever has the answer.
Okay. Antoinette Christovall, Office of Finance. You know, first, I want to thank the Core Commission for the recommendations. We do appreciate their recommendations and recognize that there's much work yet to be done. Of course, we do want to indicate that many of the recommendations were recommendations that we have moved forward. Some have been implemented, some have not, and of course, getting any assistance would be greatly appreciated. Relative to the sale of debt, we agree that, and it's one of the recommendations of Core, that an outside broker should be brought on board to identify what's available for sale, so that those, so that that debt can be screened and determine what is available for sale. Would help us greatly, because when we went forward with the first sale of debt, of course, it was severely aged judgments, but it really encompassed a lot of our staff time, and so we think it would be better just to go forward, issue an RFQ to get a listing of brokers who would be interested in assisting the city Office of Finance in selling the debt. And in doing so, we think that that would help the process better.
That would be like, what, the third level? You have the primary, secondary, and then another group?
Sell the debt, right, right.
Sell the debt.
Yes. And in some cases, there may be some debt that really shouldn't go to the secondary collection agency, it just really would be something that we would need to screen and identify. But one of the things that Core recommended, and we think is important, too, is reducing the amount of time that the collection agencies work the debt. Presently, with the four existing primary collection agencies, they, by contract, can work the debt for six, for 12 months, and Core is recommending that that be reduced to nine months. Contractually, based on our feedback from the city attorney's office, we can't move forward with that unless the collection agencies agree. But of course, when we go forward with the new RFP for primary collection agencies, which would be within a year and a half from now, we would include in there that they would only work the accounts for nine months. The secondary collection agencies that we are in the process of executing the contracts will have six months to work the debt. So you're talking about, what, 15 months? And of course, what's important is that departments refer the accounts timely, based on the executive directive, within 75 days of delinquency. If those accounts are referred more timely, it creates greater potential for collection, not only from the collection agencies, but also for the amount of inventory that remains for sale.
Okay. Continue.
I'd like to first very much thank the Director of Finance, Antoinette Christovall, as well as Revenue Manager Jeffrey Whitmore, for investing a tremendous amount of time to work with all of the Core Commission, and for being very helpful and very engaged in the whole process that has gone on to create the blueprint. So thank you very much. In terms of the, what would be required to actually go forward with a sale, first, I think that the city attorney's opinion in all of this is going to be vital, of course, and Mr. Whitmore and I have had a number of conversations about, sort of from a practical point of view, what might be the quickest way to do it. Would it be to, A, hire a consultant to sort of assess what the value is, and then, after that, to put it out for some sort of an RFP or RFQ? Or would it be to just do it all at the same time?
The assessor would be the same person that put it out, when you say all at one time?
Well, if it's, then, it, there's a way, and perhaps Mr. Whitmore or Ms. Christovall could talk about this a little bit more in-depth, to kind of do it all at once, as opposed to doing it in two stages. If one does it in two stages, it's my understanding that there was some concern by the city attorney that whoever it is that does that initial review and assessment of the value might have to be disqualified from actually bidding or bidding to be sort of the broker on such a sale. So there are a couple of issues there, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Whitmore on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galperin. As you probably are aware, we've gone through this process once before, and I know Ms. Christovall talked about some of the difficulties that we encountered and the staff time that was involved. I think there is a way we can go forward. Basically, the issue really is preparing a seller's survey, which is one of the basic tools, to let the potential group of bidders know exactly what is encompassed, and that does require some evaluation and some analysis by whichever vendor would be involved. We had originally talked about doing it in two stages, but that is not necessarily the way that it needs to be done. If we're just talking about being expeditious, we could include that as part of the process. There, it's, the way the sale is conducted is based on a commission, based on the gross bid, or what is received. So the evaluation and analysis of what potentially would be sold could be included in that process.
Okay, I mean, so you're saying you think you could put it together where the same company that does the assessment could also do the bidding on the purchase? Or are we saying, is the city attorney saying that has to be separate?
Well, originally, the way it was posed, and the feedback from the city attorney, they concurred that the initial assessment would probably logically exclude the preparer of that survey from actually bidding. So I think it would probably behoove us to get some concurrence from the city attorney.
Because what I was wondering is whether, being that they're all in the same business, of whether the person that surveys it also, basically, you put people on a bench, or you go to RFQ and you have several people on the bench, and you select one to survey and purchase or whatever this lump of debt. I mean, it would seem to me, I don't know, maybe there's some legal prohibitions in, you know...
Good. I'm probably one of the ones that's aggressively throwing rocks against a two- or three- or four-tiered process here. And if I could just sort of weigh in, because I think Jeff doesn't want to point his finger at me, and I want to just say that I think what we have to look at here, and this is, I raise, I make a point out of this, even though it's a blip on the screen, really, but I think we have to look at here is ultimately, the value of the thing which we are this minute debating, and which has resulted in lots of discussions with the city attorney about, is this person going to be disqualified, or that person going to be qualified? And reality is, most of what we are going to achieve from this, if anything, will be stuff that we were already ready to write off. So the goal of maybe getting some revenue for this thing, the revenue that is being chewed up in process to get an RFP out, to do all this, is going to exceed the money we get from the sale. Now, we've never done this before. We had one experience of doing it. I said, look, this is screaming for a pilot project, to see if it works, which with not a lot of elaborate RFPs out, and, I mean, this is akin to the golf cart situation, except there are not as many lobbyists involved, and hopefully, it won't take six years to get an RFP out and pick it. But the constant, I mean, this huge, big thing about golf carts, there's obviously a lot of money at stake in that. There is not the money involved here to justify an elaborate process. So at some point, somebody, hopefully the city attorney, could say, okay, you guys just go do it. Hire a broker, try to sell it. We may not have anybody show up to buy it.
But you're saying the broker do the whole process?
The broker could do the whole thing, and there's got to be a legal way to do that before we consume all the assets that we might achieve from actually completing the sale.
Can we just package groups of debt and auction it off?
There are lots of ways to do it.
I don't know whether, how carefully we need to study who the people are and what their bids are, and whether we can just say, hey, if their money's good, and they want to pay X amount for a group of debt, let them have it.
Well, and this has little to do with the revenue department or with the issue we're talking about. It has to do with, and there was a huge, great editorial in the LA Times, and I think Laura Chick and Winnie Boo have already thrown in audits on the issue of how quickly we are spending the TARP money, or more importantly, how slowly we are spending the TARP money. And the reason we are returning, I think, 75% or so of the TARP money is because the processes that we engaged ourselves with in order to decide how to use the money were so laboriously long and complicated that we couldn't get through the process until they asked us to send the TARP money back. Now, that's millions and millions of dollars that the city has lost because of, and other cities, too, because of a fanatical observation of this process issue with respect to public contract. But this is a fly on the arm. We'd be better off to just throw the debt out the window and write it off than to consume the energies of all of these people to sell it.
Let me ask this...
Anyway, it's just a hot button for me, I'm sorry.
But let me ask you this, is that, I could understand that if we're dealing with the five-year debt that everybody says is dated, but if you're talking about 18-month-old debt, are you in the same boat saying it's worthless?
Well, I would say, excuse me, I, you're looking at me, so I grabbed the microphone from the chairman. But I would say, we're talking about eight, five-year, 18-month debt, if the, this thing goes to quickly just like that and all of a sudden we're 15 months. I would wager that if the inspector general is appointed today, that it will be a couple years before you are selling 20-month debt. That's just the way things are. So, right now, we're just looking at the five-year, we're looking at a whole bunch of old stuff.
Yeah, I understand the five-year stuff, I'm saying-
No, but I mean, right now, if we're just looking, not, not, I'm not talking about incorporating a long-term process that's going to deal with the stuff that comes off of the secondary. I'm talking about a huge amount of accounts receivable that you show on the books, that everybody has pretty much said, "It's probably impossible to collect it." And just, but, and we had that before, but we, but what happened before, we administered it through an RFP here where we were trying to select the people. What I'm advocating for is simply give it to a broker, say, "Sell it if you can," rather than go through the RF, we've spent a year on the RFP, right? Could sell the debt? Not, maybe not that much. But anyway, I'm speaking beyond my-
My question was dealing with going forward, going forward, because I understand we have stuff in hand that doesn't require that scrutiny, but I'm talking about going forward when we get to the point of the 18-month-old, 18-month-old debt.
I'll just say-
Not a different type of debt.
Counselor, all I'm advocating for is for the current buildup of accrued debt, to have a pilot project to see if it can be sold by a broker. And if it can't, then, then we won't have to do it anymore. But we don't want, we don't need a lot of RFPs in order to determine whether somebody might be able to sell it. And this is just a pilot for what's currently there.
Currently there. But again, if we're dealing with five-year-old debt, we will come up with, I would assume, a different answer than if the system was working in its 18-month-old debt. So, we could deal with a broker today, but may not have the system that we need for a year from now. I'm just trying, is that?
Absolutely, I think that's correct. Look, if you look at the, of that $540 million pool, and at the roughly 43% of that, that is two years older or more. So, let's take that pool for the moment, the stuff that is older than two years. Now, there is a portion of that that is made up of, at least on paper, of certain sums that even if we collected would have to go to other parties. So, that has to be backed out of it. And then also, there is the question of what do we necessarily want to sell off and what do we want to write off? In the context, for example, of EMS billings, when you look at the total amounts that we collect, only about 3% currently come from those patients that were actually served, roughly. Most of it is paid by the, by Medicare, by Medi-Cal, by insurance companies, et cetera. And there are large amounts showing that would be due by individuals. But, A, it's not all that terribly collectible, and B, there's the, the, the public policy question of how aggressively do you want to pursue those people? Because even if there is a way to collect a few cents out of, out of those folks, do we, as a city, want to be doing that? Especially for what will probably not be a great deal of money? People who really don't have a lot of money, someone whose, whose, you know, young son was picked up by an ambulance and was unable to pay it, and if you then sell it and give the right to that purchaser to aggressively pursue that mother, is that something as a public policy matter we want to be doing? Personally, would be very circumspect about that.
But I think the issue is that if we go through that level of scrutiny as to the debt, that's in the role that Ms. Christovall is concerned about, is whose resources are going to go through those type of subjective decisions to say, "This goes into pile A, B, or C?" Or do you deal with it in the sense of saying, "You put it in a pile and say, 'Whatever's in here, you can take it, unravel it. If there's money in it, you benefit. If it's not, we've moved it off of our books.'" I think that's the dilemma that you're in, in the sense that we can clearly establish that that first 45 days is very important. That's, then, the next step that's important is probably the next nine months, and then it progressively gets less and less important.
Exactly.
And then, but again, I, I would think that we look at this debt differently from what's accumulated for five years versus what we hope to be in a situation in the near future.
Exactly. This is not, the sale of, of the very aging receivables is not a panacea. We don't expect it's going to generate a huge amount. But it's about establishing that process, it's about getting off the books a lot of the old stuff that is just sitting there. It's about also sending a message that, that if you wait us out, that we're not going to just finally say, "Okay, you haven't paid us for five years, so we give up." But rather, setting a tone that, "You don't pay us one way or another, eventually, we're going to seek to get paid."
You know, you make an interesting point, though. There may be some unintended consequences of this, and it may just be that we have to deal with it on a policy basis. And when you sell two-year-old ambulance debt, well, there may be a lot of regular people out there that are going to be strong-armed, and they're suddenly going to have to pay a big bill that they can't really afford. But they'll pay the $1,000 or whatever they owe because someone's really gone after them. And we probably, in our process, don't have the heart to do that. I suspect somewhere in that process, there's a little bit more humanity built into it. So, we may have to, to take that into calculation a little bit too, because, I mean, if I were buying this as a collection agency, and I've actually done a little bit of collections a million years ago myself, I mean, you don't have to show up with somebody that's armed and threaten them, but there, there are ways, in a more polite way, to still get money out of individuals that we probably wouldn't get as a city. So, some of those things really need to be thought through, because some people will buy this debt, and they'll find ways to collect some of the stuff that look, looks old and uncollectible to us, but may not be so uncollectible.
The reason I ask the question is because we've had starts and stops from LADOT standpoint to where, based on the city council's purview, it says, "Put all the pressure on, and then when the phone calls come, take the pressure off." And so, they're in a, being yanked back and forth as to just what the degree of pressure does the city want to put on this. And again, this going out to outside collections has been one of those things that people have vacillated with to say, "What's the right amount of pressure?" I think if you sell it, you've lost control of it.
Exactly.
And if I've invested in buying it, then I'm going to use all the power I have to return my investment. So, I think we have to make those decisions upfront, and I don't think we can cherry pick and say, "Oops, not that one." Otherwise, then you diminish the value of the issue. But I think we have to have some firm guidelines that we're not giving away achievable returns because we gave it away too quickly. I mean, that's the kind of things that we don't forget. Let me ask you one other thing, is that in dealing in that same area, and I didn't quite understand, the rationale was to ask that we go through this bundling of debt before it goes to the board of review? And what was the rationale on that?
Well, the, the board of review looks at, at accounts and looks at whether those are to be written off or not. If we adopt the process that is recommended in the blueprint, then basically, the department, unless it's, for example, DOT or, or Fire Department, which has an outside vendor, but that department will then do the first stab at collections, then it goes to a first collection agency, then it goes to a second collection agency, and unless there's a determination made that this is an issue for the city attorney, or that it is completely not collectible, at that point, it would go to sale. And let's say it's something that has a face value of $100, and we actually sell it for $20. Well, if that's the case, then de facto, what we didn't realize is the amount that we write off in order to get it off of our books. But it can be a much more automatic and de facto system, we believe. There are certain other kinds of accounts that you may choose to purposefully say, "We are writing this off, we are not actually going to sell it off." But for most of the, the accounts that would be moving through this process, the write-off would be really sort of an after-the-fact, de facto process, as opposed to, "Let's look at what we have that's five years old that we can finally say we've written it off."
So, there's no legal requirement that the city has to make a determination of write-off before you go out?
Uh, we actually made, made note that this would have to be done subject to the, the opinion of the city attorney's office. And there may have to be some sort of change in, in the administrative code relating to this, but that's a question better posed to the city attorney. But if, if we need to make that change, we recommend that it be made.
And then, in your perception of where the city attorney fits in, is somewhere between the secondary collections and before you get to write-off or bundling?
Well, when I was referring to the role of the city attorney, and that it was an opinion as to what the legal rights are of the city.
Taking a step back, as far as earlier, your comments were saying where the city attorney could play a role in the collection process?
Well, the city attorney by, almost by definition, is going to take a role in the, in the much larger accounts, as opposed to the smaller ones. And what we note in, let me turn to the, the appropriate appendix here. Bear with me here just one moment. This was, again, in appendix number five, there is the question, is, is the number less than 5,000 or, or more than that? Now, if it is less than 5,000, it goes through a particular process to those, to those collection agencies. If it's more than five, then it's going to be based on a determination by the office of finance, what is the best course for that? And is this something that should get referred to the city attorney immediately, as opposed to going through a series of collection agencies? And the ones that we have, for the most part, with one exception, are really about collecting smaller accounts, they're not about the big chunks of money.
But that also is, is the place where office of finance can use their newly created lean process if you have a larger debt before it goes to the city attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, so that's, so you, so it's 5,000 or more, so larger debt, you're looking to see where the city attorney has a role, the smaller debt gets written off after, somewhere after the secondary?
Uh, doesn't get written off, but, but-
Or gets bundled.
It gets bundled for sale.
All right. Then let me ask you one, a couple of other things, is that when, and Michael gave us a listing of different categories as to the 60-some-odd recommendations, has there been any review to determine of your 65 recommendations, how many of them require technology to be created or reprogrammed? How many require a city attorney opinion? How many, and I understand it was a large number that we could do by direction by the council, but on the other hand, are, because what I'm concerned about primarily is like the accounts receivable. A lot is hanging on that system coming online and being functional at mid-next year. The longer it delays, a lot of these recommendations are on hold. And then when we talk about the ability to allow people to pay over the internet, the technology there is not, you know, we don't waver once, somebody's got to do that.
Exactly.
And, and do we know what a timeline is? The ITA been involved in understanding what some of those issues are?
Um, ITA has been involved, although we did not, we, we engaged with them a great deal on everything having to do with FMS, but not on every single one of the, the technical details, the software, the hardware, et cetera, that would be needed to implement the, the technological changes that have to be part of this. We can certainly go back and look at the ones that are going to have a technology component to them, and truth be told, almost everything, one way or the other, often has a technology component. And, and engage with ITA about, you know, one by one by one, what they think that would take in terms of time and, and resources.
I think, I think that we're going to have to have that picture at some point, because if, it's one thing to move on recommendations and then come back and say, "Well, if we had just had this technology twisted or turned, we've got it done." So, I think we need to know that.
I, I think as, as a follow-up to that, I think, that's, that strikes me as a major issue, because the cost of all the technology could be a significant piece in terms of resources. And my concern, even in the budget, as we were talking about money-saving things this year, were that a lot of them were contingent on technological changes, and yet we cut the IT budget. So, I don't know at the end of the day if we need to come up with a, a big number for a, a technology fix for all of these steps, and then find some way to, to, to create a resource as a package. I don't even know if we can bond it as a revenue stream being what we save. I don't know what the creative ways are, but when, if you look at 40 different technological fixes, it could add up to a lot of money, and if we don't do it, we're obviously going to miss considerably more money by not implementing it. So, how do we, how do we deal with that?
Did you want to speak to that, Ms. Christovall?
See, I think the, the one, the real issue is going to be, like, we, we work on these things all the time, is how much money do we have that expectation of getting, and how much are we spending to get it? And I think it's just like, we dealt with on, every couple of years, we do an amnesty, and we all high-five and say, "We made $25 billion." And then, Antoinette comes in later and says, "Well, not quite that much, because you had to forgive this amount, and by the time it's over, you may have reached half that amount." So, I think it's, how much do you spend?
No, we actually exceeded it. You know, I, I just want to address what, the question that was raised about technology. I think if you look at a number of Core recommendations, they do request finance and other city departments, including ITA, to identify what is needed in terms of funding and resources to implement many of the recommendations. So, in terms of what it's going to cost, we don't know that at this time, but I can say it, it can be significant, but I think the long-term benefits will certainly far outweigh the costs that would, would be involved.
The benefits are then also an idea of how long it will take, because if we get strung out for four or five years doing some of this, then, you know, just how much do we skip along trying to get it done on that timeline? And I mean, that's a-
Right.
I think those are the kind of meaty questions of going from the core report to the implementation, that then the real rubber meets the road, how much money did it take to make it happen?
Right.
So, one thing I was also coming on the incentives, the concern I had when I read it is that, and everybody, you know, we sit through budget, everybody has a incentive, "If you just give me the money, I can do it." That's the same thing all the other 39 departments say. The dilemma I have with it just fundamentally, if departments 50-plus percent aren't doing their basic job, then why would we consider incentivizing them to be out-of-the-box thinkers when they're not doing their basic job? I just think it's, it's a cross-purpose. I mean, if, if they're not doing their basic job, those are not the people that I think you incentivize. Somebody is off the charts doing their basic job, you look for ways to say, "How can I help you continue staying off the chart?" And so, you know, and we hear it all the time, you know, the city attorney tells us, "Just give me the whole collection process, and I'll bring you 200 million." And you go, "Okay." The issue is, is that these are things that are important, and it, and I think the dilemma we've had since we've worked with Antoinette is that, yes, she can write all these reports, but fundamentally, until the mayor's office makes it a part of the rating criteria of the general manager, the general manager can look at Antoinette's great report, and "I'll see you next month." The issue is, is that it has to be driven by the mayor's office or that deputy mayor in charge to say to the general managers, "This is absolute necessity, and it's not going to be acceptable that you end up on this chart." And we can write letters and burn up all of our people writing letters, except that the final analysis, how much money did they collect, and how well are they responding? And sometimes, you just may have to call them in the office and sit down and say, "I don't want to talk to you next month about this." And generally, you let them go back to their office, and they fix it. And generally, you let them go back to their office, and they fix it. But the key is, if there's no merit step involved, if there's no, in fact, Mr. Tifank, who comes from law enforcement, I understand what he says, they, you know, we used to always say, they do what you count. And if you clearly establish a situation in which your future is in my hands, you get people a lot more attentive than you're supporting at an equal level, sending me a letter and saying, I kind of like for you to do better. Until you resolve, and it's only been five years since the executive order five has been out, to resolve that fundamental issue, mayor's office and the deputy mayor's, whoever's in charge, says, we don't want to have this conversation again, you need to get this done, then her job becomes easier. Money begins to roll in, we don't have to have another core commission in five years. But, you know, we put it in about no less than six or eight reports from this committee that says to the mayor's office, we'd like for you to implement your executive order, because she can't do it. Having been a general manager, it's nice to have a conversation with other general managers, but he don't control, they're not going to impact my life. And so the issue is, it's a nice phone call, thank you, Antoinette, appreciate, talk to you next month, but you go on about the business of what makes your living, and that is, what is your day-to-day process? And I think until we get past that, where the people that rate the general managers, make a point to say this is a priority, then we'll just keep having these meetings, because you can't get around them doing the first step of billing people, and the second step of trying to collect it, and the third step of getting it to her when they don't meet the 35 to 40-day mark. And if they don't do that, then we're all circling the drain.
I think part of the problem also is that we need to formalize a different mindset, and we may have actually been doing the opposite this year in our budget, which is, we said, all right, you have to look at what your core mission is, and that's what your focus has to be. Now, every single department views collections as not their core mission.
Except for finance.
Except for finance. So you're out there saying, we care about this, and everyone else says, well, it's their job to care about it, not mine. And I think we need to formalize a change in mindset, and that for, let's say, LAPD, obviously, controlling crime has to be their primary mission, but their absolute next-highest mission has to be revenue, because maybe even above their primary mission, because that's what allows everyone to do their mission. If we don't get the kinds of revenue that we need because of all the things we haven't been doing, then you have libraries, you know, open five days a week instead of six or seven, as they are in some places. I mean, every department is not doing their core mission adequately, because they don't have the kind of resources. And part of why they don't have the resources is they aren't implementing all the steps that, some of which we've come up with now, but most of which have been out there, and we haven't followed up on them.
Mr. Chairman, if I might make a closing statement on behalf of two of us who are not the chairman, I just want to say that I have been on a number of commissions since I've been here in the city, at the county and at the city level. I've really never served on a commission that every single one of the commissioners was so enthusiastically motivated to make a difference. And it was a great honor for me to serve with everybody, but especially with the chairman. I think you would not have this report but for his persistence. He's an excellent lawyer and excellent writer, and I think we, I think the city owes him. We get to take the credit, and I get the mouth off here, everything, but he does the work, and I just wanted to personally and publicly acknowledge that. I know Michael Gagin shares my view on that. Secondly, with respect to where do we go from here, and I think Councilman Parks was saying, well, there is one department that does have this as their mission statement, as their responsibility, and I think, and Commissioner Gagin pointed out, that twenty-seven other recommendations are really pointed at things the department can do, but I think, as you so adequately said, they can do it only if other departments cooperate with them in the doing, and that we think that's where the inspector general will be of great help. Finally...
Let me just comment on that. They'll only be successful as the people who they speak to, their boss, tells them to do it. Or else you just have another person writing another report.
That's exactly right, and that's where, and eventually, reflecting back to my Navy days, and the days that I shined my shoes were the day the inspection was going to be held. I thought, that's not a bad idea, Chief, but...
But so they're different than shining your shoes.
I know, it's cheap and I'm shy.
Keeping, and the thing is, the mayor's office is supposed to keep them shining.
Right.
The inspection brings up efficiency.
But let me, let me just say one more thing, and then I'm, I promise not to say anything else. I actually, I think I've read, if not, I don't, I know I've not read all of the previous reports, starting with 1990, but I've read, I've read well over half of the outside accounting firms that made reports, the auditors, I even appeared before audit and government efficiency when Laura Chick was the chairman, and everybody knows how long that is ago, that was years and years ago. And all those reports were made, and they were all extremely well-written, and the department's guidelines are extremely well-written, and probably, your department's guidelines could be an example for lots of cities about what should be done. But I also read council action, with response to each of those many reports, was essentially the same. They said, we'd like to have a task force with the CAO, the CLA, to the other people to, and the magic words are, study and report back to the council with recommendations as to what to do. And there was never any real follow-up over twenty years to the study and report back mandate. Now, the reason I point that out is that I think we have suggested, and hopefully, the city council will find it in itself to reappoint us for another six months, one of our agendas for the next six months, if we are reappointed, is to follow up on the recommendations we made. We're beyond study and report back, we made recommendations, assuming the council will adopt some of those, and assuming we are in place, we will follow up. Thank you.
And I know both of us still have a number of questions and comments, but we have three people in the audience that have been waiting for a long time, so I think I'm going to jump in and let them speak, and then return to our questions. First is Mel Kohn, to be followed by Guy Lepa, and then Dr. Clyde Williams.
Well, good afternoon, Councilmen. Thank you for having the opportunity for VICA to appear today. My name is Mel Kohn. I am chair of VICA's ad hoc audit committee, which dealt with collection issues over the years. On March 19th, 2008, VICA appeared before the AG&E to discuss collections, and discussing how poor it was, and for several years, we have yet to see officials take significant action. VICA has been and continues to be very supportive of the core commission's report, and I can just say personally, it was just an outstanding job, one, the president, but also all the Many of the recommendations included in the blueprint for reforms of city collections were made previously during these two years by VICA in its report known as the VICA 50. The VICA 50 recommendations provided specific suggestions for improving revenue generation and proposed ways to reduce the budget deficit. One of the recommendations introduced by VICA and reiterated in the core report is to have the city designate an inspector general, also known as VICA's recommended collection sheriff, to oversee city's collection activities. One thing, just following up on the statements that were made by the commission, VICA, when we formed our ad hoc committee, reviewed all of the controllers' reports for the year 2007. There's one consistent item that goes through every report, there is no accountability. We focused on the collection report, and again, it was there, and it's just supported by the results of the core report. We have directive five, we have mandates, we have guidelines, but there is no accountability. And so, I must mention that as an issue that we have seen. We have yet to see this or other recommendations implemented. We truly appreciate the collaboration and leadership of the audits and government efficiency committee, and budget and finance, in examining the audit and pledging to work together. However, we cannot tolerate inaction any longer. Los Angeles can no longer carry such massive receivables, and need to move to implement the core and VICA 50 recommendations for building into collections. We hope that you will move quickly to implement these reforms without delay. In close, I must refer to the core summary page, under next steps, there paragraph, because I think this really speaks to why we're all here today, and what core was all about. Each day that LA continues to not act on reform is a day of lost revenue, lost business, lost services, and lost opportunity. The good news is that the problems can be fixed by recommended actions of the city officials and departments working hand-in-hand with core, and VICA has confidence that this can be done with all parties working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Guy Lepa?
Guy Lepa, I'm here on behalf of Council President Eric Garcetti, just to say a few words to thank all the core commissioners, and of course, you know, the committee here for coming so quickly to read the recommendations and discuss the recommendations. And Council President wanted to urge a quick approval of the core recommendations, the core core recommendations, including the IG, and perhaps put together a package of recommendations that can move very quickly while we look at the rest of the sixty-five recommendations, so a handful of sort of the key recommendations that can move quickly and be implemented as soon as possible, including the IG, which, as he said in the press conference last week, he would like to see implemented before the end of the year. So, that's the message from him, and thank you, everyone, and the Chair of Core for doing a great job, and all the rest of the commissioners, and all the council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, also DWP liaison, and who's in charge? That's the basic question. Supposedly, there's a mayor. Supposedly, there's managers of each department that collect or don't collect. There's boards, there's commissions, all of which generally have to come through the council. So, oh, if we can't get the existing departments to work properly, we'll form a new department, the IG. Great. Except for, will they have the same issues? Will they go along in order to get along? And when it comes to budget, who's going to give the budget? Because in the DWP, an auditor gets $200,000 a year, plus-plus. So, it's a question as to who's in charge. Is the city council in charge? Doesn't seem to be, because you can't get the departments to do their collections. You approve their fees, you approve their liens, you approve all sorts of things, except that you still have a large amount of money sitting out there, not being collected, not collectible. So, the question is, will an inspector general solve the problem? I don't think so, because you have to have cooperation. Oh, are you going to give subpoena power to the IG? That's an interesting element. So what will the IG do with it? How will you get it selected? Will it be elected? I don't know. We have a controller, maybe you should just give the IG duties to the controller, since they're already in place. I don't know. And that's one of the problems. There seems to be, took them six months to come up with an IG. We did that in less than a month with the IG recommendation for the Department of Water and Power. So, I hope it works, but it doesn't seem to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, do you have more questions?
Let me just ask Ron, on the issue, and we use it throughout the report, about centralization of the, our accounts receivable, and I think Macias said if we went to a total centralization, it would be significantly more costly. Is your report moving towards departments still issuing the debt and then monitoring for a short period and moving it on? Are you looking more towards eventually somebody in the city doing the entire debt for the city?
The Macias report had a number of different dollar projections on a variety of things, some of which we agreed with, some of which we did not. What they also stated in that report was that centralizing everything tomorrow, A, was not possible, and B, not feasible, and C, maybe not even advisable. And I think that that part of it is true. There are some departments that are doing a very good job of it. For example, you look at the Cry Wolf, and what progress we've made in that. So, that I think can serve as an example to other departments and to the rest of the city. Eventually, we would like to see more centralization, not just of the collection, but of the billing. But, at least for the moment, for most of these departments, we see them continuing to do that initial billing. Mind you, the large dollar numbers for, for example, fire department and for DOT, those are already either now done, or they will be done through an outside vendor, and those represent, as we all know, the lion's share of the non-tax receivables.
Let me ask you one other thing. You talked about your timeline, forty-five days. I was wondering also whether you gave any thought to, and you were critical that the fact that many bills do not have penalty and interest, or there's a variety of different scales, would the timeline of sending it to collection, to Office of Finance, would that be an appropriate spot to where a standardized penalty and interest is added, as opposed to every department doing their own thing and having different percentages and things of that nature?
I personally believe that there ought to be as much consistency as possible, and that the more that the Office of Finance can be engaged in that process, the better. So, depending upon what that kind of specific collection is, but as you know, our appendix nine listed all of the various types of fees by departments that are and are not charging penalties, interest, et cetera. Again, for DOT and for fire, it's a different story, but we believe that it could be made consistent across pretty much every department, and your idea that it be done through Office of Finance, I think that that could be a, certainly we would want the Office of Finance to weigh in on that, but that could simplify things tremendously.
Because what I'm concerned about, if we're having difficulty them just transmitting the bill, to have them now sit down and calculate an interest and penalty before transmission appears that we may be waiting a while. So I'm just wondering whether, if there's a standardized figure to where it's agreed upon that it's ten percent for interest and fifteen percent for penalty or whatever, that is standardized, and the trigger point is, when it gets in the hands of Office of Finance, that triggers it?
It sounds very good. The only caveat to that is that we talk about it kind of getting into the Office of Finance, but because these, many of these receivables, if not collected, will be then going to the collection agency, they're sort of under the supervision of the Office of Finance, but they're not exactly in and being collected by the Office of Finance, and the systems that are monitoring those numbers on those various accounts are actually with the collection agencies.
But they collect our interest and penalty, don't they?
Yes, yes. So, we would have to find a way for those collection agencies to do that. So, we would have to find a way for those collection agencies to do that, and to do it consistently under the supervision of the Office of Finance. But it wouldn't necessarily be the Office of Finance sending out the bill for that late fee and penalty. It would be already included.
No, no, I'm just saying that when they transmit it to them, is that the appropriate time to add it? So collections will know it's $100, plus 10%, plus 15%, whatever that interest and penalty are, as opposed to every department creating their own percentage and deciding how they're dealing with it? Because that seems to be where it breaks down.
Now, in fact, the whole thing should probably be automated like the ticket, parking ticket writing process is. And I think when you get a notice of the ticket in the mail, it tells you how much you will be paying an interest and penalty if you don't pay it right now. And frankly, the idea that every one of our bills doesn't have a step in that process, where it has the same, as Councilmember Parks said, the same exact percentage in every single case of a delinquent bill. It's 10% for this and 15% for that, and nobody else has to do a complex calculation, which I'm trying to remember, I think the Fire Department had really complex calculations that slowed down their process considerably. Everyone should have a nice, simple process, and at the exact same time in their process, they should have to put out that information. You owe us $500 for a false alarm, but if we don't receive that money by October 29th, it's going to be $750. I mean, that should, the idea that this isn't systematized throughout the city is somewhat amazing to me. But we're actually, I guess, still quite far from that. But it wouldn't be that difficult. It would be pretty simple to implement, and I would think we'd ideally want to hit that step, where we ask for that money and let people know at least that they're going to be paying the higher penalty before it goes off to the collection agency. Because I think just that threat has to bring in a certain amount of money. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, certainly, for example, your property tax bill, or your credit card bill, or so many bills that you get, say, this is the amount that's due. It's due on such and such a date. If it's not paid by such and such a date, then you're going to incur a late fee or a penalty of X or Y, or it's going to, the number that you owe is going to climb to another number. There are a lot of bills that do that, and...
And I think what we have here is every department's created their own billing and penalty and interest system.
Or not.
Let me just, and then my final thing. One of the things, and I think we're going to be working, this kind of captures a theme that Mr. Smith has been talking about in Budget for about five years, but one of the things that we're going to work on, and I asked Karen to start looking at before the budget starts, is to look at a way in which Office of Finance is working off the budget, that they are given a budget that is based on a percentage of what they truly generate, not money that people just pay because they get a bill, but money that they generate and figure out what their budget should be, and it's almost like a special fund, so that they then can be outside of that managed tiring and the other things that detract from their ability to keep people working. And so we're going to try to put something like that together before the budget starts, so that, and what we're thinking about, and I don't know if this is scientifically, but we're thinking about going back previous year, like '0, like '09, '10, and say, with that year's budget, that you're always dealing with the year prior, as giving them their budget for this subsequent year. They know what it is, they can manage it, and you then, because I think what is lost in translation is the belief that everybody knows what a revenue position is, first of all. And I think that gets confusing. The other thing for these departments, if you cut or do not let them hire their front office administrative people, you can say that's not a revenue position, but her response is she has to go get a revenue position to sit at the front desk. So in effect, you're losing the revenue position. So, we're going to look at some way that we can create within the budget, the ability to where there is a dollar value and that their budget is given to them and is somewhat, as best we can, immune to all of the ramifications of what's going on outside of them, because I don't think there's anything in their budget, in their office, that's not revenue generating. They're either supporting revenue generators, or they are revenue generators, or they're creating revenue. So that's something we're going to work on before the end of this year.
That sounds very, very sensible, because they've really been subject to the vicissitudes of the city budget. And at least as we CORE commissioners see it, it has negatively impacted their ability to do what they can do best, which is have people doing collections.
Now, there's something that I remember you mentioning either today or in a previous meeting, and I don't know if I spotted anywhere in the report. In addition to all the things that we're billing but not collecting well, there are things that we're not billing for at all. And I don't know if you can give us some examples of those, and if I missed it hidden in the report, and how we get those items into this new process that we create so we actually do bill for things that we're not even putting into the process and billing.
Well, there are many opportunities that we see, and we're planning to go through this in our next phase, but a couple of things. First, let me talk about intergovernmental sources of revenue. And this is not for a department, per se, but intergovernmental sources. Looking at the share that we're supposed to get, for example, of documentary transfer tax or of property tax revenue. We have people in the city that are looking at what we are getting, but not necessarily what we should be getting. And the same is true for other kinds of monies that we should be getting in terms of sales tax and what our proper share of it is. So, we really want to be looking at those numbers and look at them much, much more carefully, because we believe there's a tremendous amount of money that is at stake there. And as you know, the whole subject of property transfers that occur within legal entities has been one of my personal obsessions and what we're missing out on in terms of the increased assessments that we get our share of, as well as the documentary transfer tax. The county has often said, well, it's just kind of a wash, even if the numbers are not calculated exactly between various cities that are within the county. But I believe that we have much more at stake, because we, as a charter city, have a much higher rate of documentary transfer tax than all of those non-charter cities and even than some of the other charter cities. So we've got a lot of money at stake there. Also, we think that there's a lot of opportunity in, as it were, enterprise or entrepreneurial opportunities and assets that the city has, and certainly Commissioner Gagin can talk about this, because this has been something that he's very much been a leader in. We've got lots of assets, be they real, be they intellectual property, you name it, that we don't really keep track of and figure out how to make the best use of. And I'm sure you can talk about, a little bit about what some of our next phases of work are going to be around that. But we want to be able to look at every single department, one by one, and see where there is money that can be collected for things that we never bill for. It could be, for example, in parks and rec and uses of the park, or maybe even encouraging certain kind of uses that we don't have right now that can generate revenue, be it special events or whatever it might be. So, if you look, for example, at libraries, we're focused very much on fees and on fines, but the library has tremendous assets in terms of not just the books that it has, but its videos, its DVDs, you name it. There may be some interesting opportunities for the library to generate some revenue doing that. Look, I pay $10 a month to Netflix. I'm not suggesting we go compete with them, but we have tremendous assets that we could perhaps make better use of. And if we think in those terms, we'll generate some more money as a result of it. Mr. Gagin?
Mr. Chairman members, just to give you an example of some of the revenue opportunities that have surfaced in discussions with the Bureau of Sanitation alone. I know Commissioner Smith is very familiar with the Terminal Island Renewable Energy Project. That project has produced spectacular results in just a year and a half. We inject effluent from Terminal Island as well as hyperion there, but the real revenue implications for Terminal, for tire, as we call it, come from the fact that we also inject brine that is produced by the recycled water plant located at Terminal Island. We do not dispose of this toxic brine into San Pedro Bay as we did until about a year ago, when we started injecting it at Terminal Island. The opportunity that presents comes from the fact that on the drawing board or in various stages of construction or expansion right now, are six advanced treatment projects, advanced water treatment projects located elsewhere in the county. The county is reaching its limit with respect to its Regional Water Quality Control Board permit for disposing of brine into the ocean. We have a site. Beyond that, we have the technology here in Los Angeles that can be applied elsewhere within the city and outside the city. The four treatment plants that we have also produce or product of the treatment process is phosphorus. And a quick quantification of the commercial value of the phosphorus at our plants, if extracted, comes out to about $4 million a year. We emit over 100 tons of nitrogen per day from hyperion, for which we pay a premium for an air quality permit. The commercial value of that nitrogen for use in the refinery industry for fire suppression purposes comes out to about $7 million a year. The city owns over, Bureau of Sanitation owns over 220,000 acre feet of water rights in Kern County by virtue of its use of recycled water on the farm that the city owns. The value at today's market rates of those rights exceeds $200 million. And it's a right that keeps on giving in the sense that we land apply about 12,000 acre feet of recycled water to that property annually. So, we've just started touching the surface with respect to that one department. Doubtless, there are multiple opportunities in other departments. What distinguishes the Bureau of Sanitation, and what we're really going to take a good look at to see if it has application to other departments, is that for the last several years, the Bureau of Sanitation has operated with a labor management committee that meets quarterly. That labor management committee goes over a regular agenda. One item on the agenda at every single meeting is what revenue opportunities exist in what we do. How can we do things better, less expensively? How can we produce more value at less cost? In other words, as part of the institutional labor management culture of the Bureau of Sanitation, labor and management think entrepreneurially. And that's a model we would like to explore using for application to other departments. But we see, already, just touching the surface, we see some great opportunities out there to enhance the city's revenues.
I want to just echo that and follow up on it. One of the things that we also want to be looking into in greater depth is how do we take an inventory of these various types of assets that we have? And opportunities for licensing fees for revenues from logos, from trademarks, from trade names, from patents that we have? And we have all of these things. From software, proprietary processes we have. You may have just seen in the paper the other day that Beverly Hills Now is going to, they've licensed their name and their logo for Beverly Hills Perfume, which is going to be sold in stores all over the country. They expect to make several hundred thousand dollars from just licensing their name to do that. So, it begins with really taking a look at all these various assets that we have and how we can maximize them. One example is, I was actually at an event the other day, was speaking to someone who works with one of the studios, that would love to be able to actually advertise upcoming movies on sanitation vehicles. And wouldn't that be great? The potential to generate some revenue, and some of those sanitation vehicles might actually even look better with something on them, so...
Actually, that one would be really easy, because they all actually have a space now for that, but it just says that you can rent it. I haven't seen a single one out there with an actual rental, so maybe we can let them know the opportunity's already there. They just need to do it.
There's one studio that is ready to go, and actually would like to do that.
Yeah, just pointed in our direction, we're already there. Greg, do you have any other questions? Because I know Mr. Parks and I have already...
I would be redundant, Rob, so...
Well, I'd suggest then a few actions, and you can add any that you might suggest. I'd hold the item in committee and give the following instructions. First, I'd instruct the CAO and the CLA to report back in two weeks on the necessary steps for the council to create a position of inspector general for collections and a timeline to do that as well. I'd instruct the Office of Finance to reconcile the recommendations in the Macias study with the recommendations in the CORE report, and all other council items that have been, and motions that have been offered, and to create a master list of recommendations and a matrix, as Councilmember Smith suggested a little earlier. And I would instruct the Office of Finance to evaluate CORE's recommended amendments to the citywide billing and collections guidelines, including timeframes for secondary collections, and evaluating pools of bad debt for sale prior to writing them off. And I don't know how long Finance thinks we should give them. Could you do that in two weeks as well, or is that not enough time?
We're going to do 30 days.
Okay. We'll make the Finance ones 30 days, and the instruction to the CAO and CLA to come back in two weeks. And any other suggestions?
On that item, for the two-week report back, two things I think we need to add to that is, I don't think we can approve a inspector general without talking about a staff. Also, a recommendation as to where they should be located, and thirdly, what is their source of revenue that will fund, but I think we need, that they need to give us a comprehensive issue. On the other two recommendations, I think we need to include, if it weren't already, the issue of ITA as to addressing what technology needs, or we should get that back in that 30-day report, what technology needs, and also the city attorney on what legal issues that we may have to address or overcome as relates to the recommendation. But those would be two things I'd like to add to those recommendations.
That'd be great. Anything else?
And for clarification, you'd like to hold the matter in committee?
Yes, I'd hold the whole thing in committee. And initially, to speed up that one item, to have the creation of the IG back in two weeks.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, if I may, thank the Chair and the Chair for... I'd just like to, if I may, thank the Chair and the Chair, and all of the council members for taking such a vital and active role in all of this, and for the opportunity that we as commissioners have had and continue to have to be of service to the city. And I wanted to thank you so much for such kind words, Commissioner Farrar, and to say yet again how honored and privileged I am to work with an amazing group of commissioners who have worked really hard and each have contributed tremendously to this process. So thank you to them. And also, by the way, to our representative from the CLA, John Deering, who's been just terrific, so have to publicly thank him as well.
And we thank everybody who's been involved with this process. It's quite exciting, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.